Door. Yep, and we're putting out some more chairs, so that's great. So, once you're all checked in and got your wristbands, so that we know that you're a registered voter, we'll get on with this thing. It is just a little bit past 10:00, and we'll have a good Saturday morning get-together, pre-raking season, which is nice, so we're not doing this when you could be doing yard work. And we're past 10 o'clock. Town Clerk has informed me that we do have a quorum, and I appreciate your all being here. So, this is the Town of Irving. It's a special town meeting on Saturday, March 5th, 2022, roughly 10:00 o'clock, at 28 Northfield Road, Irving, Mass., for a special town meeting that's entitled Commonwealth of Massachusetts Franklin SS, Town of Irving Constables in the Name of the Commonwealth. Oh, pardon me, I didn't give the video guy a heads-up, did I? You're running? All right, thank you. "Town of Irving Constables in the Name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the said inhabitants qualified to vote in town affairs to meet on the grounds of the Irving Elementary School located at 28 Northfield Road, Irving, Massachusetts, 01344, on Saturday, March 5th, 2022, at 10:00 a.m. Qualified inhabitants will meet then and there to vote on the following articles in the warrant, and they're listed in your warrant handout that was mailed, as well as available here today, and certified. Constables, in addition, you are hereby directed to serve the above warrant and to post attested copies as directed by vote of the town at least 14 days before said meeting. Fail not and make due return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the Town Clerk for the day of said meeting. It's given under our hands this 7th day of February, 2022. It's signed by the Select Board, and it's certified. Franklin SS, Town of Irving, I have served up the above warrant by posting up attested copies as directed by vote of the town at least 14 days before time of holding said meeting, signed by Constable Richard Newton on February 10th, 2022." That formality brings us, opens the meeting, so I declare this special town meeting to be open, and I'd like us all to take a moment to stand up and offer our Pledge of Allegiance to our country and flag. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." So, this is a very well-attended special town meeting, so thank you all for being here. Some of you may be first-time or occasional attendees of town meetings or special town meetings, so I know there's an article of particular interest to some folks in here. Just a reminder, here in the Town of Irving, it's not like some of those video clips that you see of school committee meetings running out of control with people standing up and shouting, or people maligning other individuals, or threats, or any of that kind of stuff. That's not us. We discussed the article. Everybody gets a chance to make their point and be heard by being called on by me. The additional thing that's happening here today that hasn't happened before to us is we happen to be on video. So, our local cable system is here to record us for posterity, and I hear that's going to be a habit going into the future, that we have recordings at special town meetings and town meetings for rebroadcast later, for your own reviewing, and for people who may not have been able to make it here today, to see what the process is. And our process is pretty clean. We'd like to have dissenting discussion, and we'd like to have nice, clean votes. I'm your moderator. It's my job to keep it running nice and clean. So, pass or fail on these? That's not my job. My job is that you get heard and that your votes count. That's my job. So, I've read through this. It's a pretty interesting go. There's a lot of zoning stuff with a lot of words. So, at some points, I'm just going to call what the article is, read a couple key phrases from it, say who it was approved by, like the Select Board or the Finance Committee, or the School Committee, as it might be, and then I'm going to open up the discussion thereafter, because you've all got the handout here and had some chances to read it, because it was mailed home. So, that's going to be my format today. Also, if you would like to speak, and I call on you, the TV people would truly like you to go to that microphone over there to have your, you know, to state what is on your mind. Now, I know that's a little unusual for us, and it takes a little bit of time to travel from Row 26 to the front corner over there, but they'd like to do that to capture it. If you're uncomfortable with that, feel free to state what you're going to state and allow me to restate it for the microphones and for the video. So, it's going to slow us down a little bit, but I'm okay with that. So, there was a little preamble here that, "I can't ignore history," as my eyes absolutely leak, thinking about the people in Ukraine. So, if we, if we do nothing else for just a moment here, let's have a moment of silence for the people in Ukraine and for history that's unfolding in front of our eyes. Thank you. Okay. You ready to have some fun? Come on. You ready to have some fun? We didn't have to shovel too much snow this winter. It hasn't been so bad. Spring's coming. I could have been in the Caribbean, and here I am. Yes? You ready for this, Jackie? Names are like water in my head, even though they've got name tags in front of them. Maybe I can have you all, starting with Dick Newton right here, go across and introduce yourselves. Speak up nice and loud.
Dick Newton, Town Clerk.
Jacob Smith, Chair of Select Board.
John Bass, Chair of Select Board.
Joel Dunbar, Chair of Select Board.
David Dunn, Chair of Project.
Charles Wren, Chief of Government.
Ted Polis, Chief of City.
Dan Hamer, Chief of Government.
And in the back, monitoring all of the details. Who works for the Town of Irving in this room? Just raise your hand. I get a small check every year, so I have to raise my hand. Yeah, so there's a bunch of us here who work for the town. Thank you all for doing your part, because it's an important part. Somebody's going to step up and do it. Thank you, Jackie. Good suggestion. Some people don't know who's here, and we're glad to introduce them. Article 1, it's an appropriation for fiscal year 2021 expenses. Yes? Would you like to do that now? I would allow. Please feel free.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. It's great to see such a large crowd at our SDM. This rivals our annual town meeting attendance in years before COVID, it seems visually, so thank you all. I'm up here to provide some context from the Select Board about some of the things that you'll hear today and other items. So, this is official response from the Select Board, and it will be posted online and on social media for others who were unable to tend to read. "The Irving Select Board would like to address an anonymous letter that was circulated through some of the community. A few residents have brought this to our attention, to which we appreciate, as the letter was not sent to any town officials. We are disappointed that the author or authors of this letter has decided to spread misinformation throughout our community, as we would have welcomed them to attend any board meetings or public hearings on these matters, stop into Town Hall, or to speak to us directly about any questions or concerns they may have. Personal attacks against the Select Board members, our employees, and our families are unjustified and counterproductive. Without fully understanding the motivations of the individuals, it appears that this attempt at fear mongering is meant to generate concern among voters and to encourage voters to extend the special town meeting that is being held today, Saturday, March 5th, 2022, with the explicit purpose of voting down a proposed bylaw change that would create a planned unit development, a PUD, overlay district, and update the zoning map accordingly. The proposed PUD overlay district will include the IP Mill property, the Irving Paper Mill properties, the French King Commercial District properties, and the Renovator Supply properties, as well as town-owned properties on Care Drive. The proposed bylaw is meant to provide an additional development option for unique areas like the IP Mill, and to provide the Planning Board more tools with the special permit process. The proposed PUD could apply to commercial, industrial, and/or residential uses, and if adopted, would become part of the entire zoning bylaw and would work in relation with the rest of the sections and zones. The proposed bylaw is the result of more than a year of work by the Planning Board members and town staff that was conducted at public meetings and has been presented at a public hearing. In an effort to fully warn the Irving voters, the Select Board intentionally mails the town meeting warrants home to voters so that they have an opportunity to read any proposed changes and then attend town meetings ready with questions. The Select Board hopes that voters understand what the proposal would do for these unique properties and the tools it would provide the Planning Board to control development in the best interests of the Town of Irving. This proposed bylaw has been conflated with another conversation that has been ongoing in public meetings about if and how the town would work to incorporate affordable housing in town. The town currently has zero affordable housing units according to the state's inventory, and according to state law, each community is required to work toward an inventory of at least 10% affordable housing. The town's master plan, which was adopted in 2002, included clear statements about the town's intention to work toward this goal, and as a community, we have not made that intended progress. The town's long-sought development of a senior housing complex will likely need to incorporate an affordable housing component. This topic came up in a prominent way in the fall of 2021, when the Select Board had been working on the sale of the former graded school building and the former IP Mill complex, where an interested party expressed interest in submitting proposals for acquiring the properties that would include housing. While the Select Board believes that housing is more appropriate for the former graded school building, as it exists in a predominantly residential neighborhood, the Select Board has remained open to all forms of redevelopment for the former IP Mill site and has always anticipated a commercial and/or light industrial or mixed reuse of this site. The conversations in the fall were the first time that a primarily residential use had ever been discussed. Related to concerns for traffic in Irving Center, we have been actively working on the FY '23 budget planning process. Through that process, the Capital Planning Committee has put forward a recommendation to the Select Board and the Finance Committee to ask the voters at the annual town meeting if they would like to replace the Church Street Bridge, and if they would support engineering to prepare to replace the Swamp Road Bridge. The Select Board will be discussing the preferred final design at our next meeting with the Finance Committee. If approved by voters, we would be able to proceed with the design and construction activities. For many years, the town has advocated to Mass. Department of Transportation for Route 2 safety improvements, and recently has received communication from Mass. DOT that indicates they are willing to work with the town and community members on design for Route 2 safety improvements. We look forward to engaging with the state and our community members to improve safety along Route 2 and to address the safety-related concerns that are experienced on the connecting residential roads, specifically as they relate to the neighborhoods of North Street and Church Street recently. We are pleased to see that park improvements have been noticed by community members. The Select Board thanks the Recreation Commission for work on their multi-year strategic plan that includes those townwide park improvements. The recent improvements to the Church Street Park and the park on Reynolds Street are part of that work. We look forward to supporting their efforts in Zilinski Field this year, and additionally want to thank the town staff members and the vendors that have worked to make these improvements. The Select Board appreciates that members of the public want to engage on these topics, express concerns, and think critically about solutions. We hope community members will choose to attend meetings, stop into Town Hall and review documents, and ask questions, and volunteer to serve on boards and committees to work on these issues. We encourage community members to speak directly with elected and appointed officials to express concerns and ask questions. While officials cannot always provide the answer someone would like to hear, we always appreciate the opportunity to talk directly with our community members and weigh their concerns and recommendations when working through town issues. Further questions or concerns about anything else in the anonymous letter that was circulated or any other topic are welcome at our regularly scheduled Select Board meetings. Our next Select Board meeting is scheduled for Monday, March 14th, at 6:30 p.m. at the Senior and Community Center at One Care Drive. Any questions related to specific special town meeting articles today are welcome when those articles are presented to the public for discussion. Thank you, from the Irving Select Board.
Well said, and that's that rap, which makes some interesting points, but take away the emotion, with the emotion, it's dismissible. So, Article 1, appropriation for FY 2021 expenses. It's $1,983.36 from free cash for the purpose of paying fiscal year 2021 invoices as listed below. And they're listed right there with Cooley Dickinson, Axon Enterprises, Lower Pioneer Valley, Supreme Systems, Home Depot, et cetera, et cetera. It's submitted by the town administrator, and the Finance Committee's approval is 3 yes, 1 0 nay, and 0 absent. Would take a motion to accept the article as printed from somebody? As print? Do we have a second? We have a second on that? Thank you very much. So, paying some bills that didn't get paid in the prior fiscal year, we have to vote on it. Is there any need for question or discussion? No questions appearing. All those in favor of Article 1, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. Article 1 is approved for the majority. Yeah, I did hear one voice. Unless, of course, my hearing aids acting up. Article 2 is an amendment to the fiscal year 2022 general operating budget in the amount of $10,000 from free cash, and it lists out the amended amounts, and it appears Public Works is the source of that $10,000. Submitted by the Select Board. Select Board recommends approval, and the Finance Committee has 3 yes votes and 2 absent, 1 0 nay votes. Take a motion to accept as printed? Thank you very much. Anybody want to second that? You have a second right here? Thank you very much. So, Article 2, it adds $10,000. There is a description there, but it looks like new cemetery management software for burials and deed tracking. Are there any questions related to Article 2? No questions appearing. All those in favor of Article 2, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. Article 2 is passed unanimously. Yes? Yes, you may. I would declare 9/10 approval. There was only one dissenting voice. Yes, that's a good point. Thank you, Dan, for keeping us on track. Prior year's fiscal items require 9/10 approval. With one dissenting voice, it obviously achieved 9/10. Article 3, appropriation for assessing software upgrades. It's $25,000 for free cash for replacing and upgrading assessing software. It's submitted by the Board of Assessors. Select Board recommends approval. The Finance Committee has given us 4 yeses, and one absent. Capital Planning Committee has given us 5 yeses. We have a motion to accept it as printed with a second. Thank you very much. So, we're going to buy some new software for the assessors and upgrade that whole assessing system. It happens about every, what, six years or so, Jackie?
So, devaluation happens every five years, but our software is 20 years old and it's outliving the old one, and if we upgrade the technology, we need to upgrade the software.
Okay, thank you. 20 years ago, was I an assessor back then? Oh, okay. I know I did it for a few years. But wow, that's old software, so okay. Are there questions? No questions appearing. All those in favor of Article 3, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. Article 3 has passed unanimously. Article 4, it's an appropriation for the General Stabilization Fund, $544,030, transferring $544,030 from the Library Construction Fund. It's submitted by the Select Board, and the Finance Committee says 3 yeses and 2 absents, so the Finance Committee basically approves. Take a motion to accept as printed from anyone? Do I have a second anywhere? Thank you very much. All right, as I understand it, and just a little piece of background, we got the library done in pretty good order. We set aside some money, and this is money that's left over after getting the job done that comes, that we can put away in our stabilization. Is that about right? Because it'd be a really cool thing if we accomplished such a task.
Close. This is, I believe, the final payment from MBLC for the grant that helped support that library, and it was being paid annually at this amount. And I believe this is the last payment from them, and we're moving that back into the general stabilization where the voters authorized to borrow from ourselves to do this project.
Well, so we extended these funds, and here's the Massachusetts Library Board grant refunding us for what we spent. us for what we spent. Okay, I'm following along. Everybody else? Are there questions? No questions appearing. Everybody in favor of Article Four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Article Four has passed unanimously. Article Five is an appropriation for the General Stabilization Fund, and it's to transfer $170,933.49 into the General Stabilization Fund. It's submitted by the Select Board, and the Finance Committee recommends approval.
May I have a second?
We have a motion and a second putting this in front of us. This is to close the Public Library Photovoltaic Solar Array Special Article. So, again, this is library dollars that we now can put away. Is there a question on this? Curiosity, interesting point. None appearing. All those in favor of Article Five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Article Five has passed unanimously. Article Six, now, these are very detailed articles, and we got a bunch of them here. And it's, I talked with Brian Smith just a few days ago to say, okay, what's going on here? Basically, we're tidying up some boundaries on some properties, and this is just in general across these articles. We're tidying up some boundaries on some properties that needed to be corrected because they were not recorded correctly, and we're making some things Chapter 90 highways so we can be eligible for state funds, et cetera, for the maintenance of these roadways. So, we're setting ourselves up to have A, clean deeding on public ways, and B, eligible for state funds as they would help us out in road maintenance and building, et cetera, et cetera. The first one is the extension of Care Drive, which is right between the library and the senior center. There's a little road. This extends that road out into the back field for any potential for the town to build senior housing, which has been a good feel in the town that we want, a place for our seniors to live and stay in town. So, this extension right here sets up the roadway for that to be possible. And we got some other ones that fix boundaries and re-record deeds and things like that because we had some cleaning up to do. So, our next bunch of articles is all this same kind of thing. So, I'll read. Article Six, Acceptance of the Extension of Care Drive. See if the town will vote to accept the extension of Care Drive as a public way by the following description. That description is listed for you all to read. It's submitted by the Select Board.
May I have a second?
We have a motion and a second on Article Six, putting it in front of us for any question, discussion, or otherwise? Yes.
Can we use the mic?
So, we'd love you to use the microphone when you can, but I'll restate what you said. Is this for the immediate construction of a Care Drive extension? Have I got that right? Or is this just setting up the capacity to do it sometime in the future? That's the question?
It's the latter. It's the capacity to do it and would likely be in line with the senior housing development or other project that would need necessitate the actual paved surface. There's no immediate plans to make any pave changes.
May I have a second? I guess the law applies, and I'll try to be loud enough or whatever.
Nope, okay. And thank you for running up to the microphone. Appreciate it.
So, I'm in favor of this, but I'm just wondering, how far back does it go? Does it go back to the woods? Go back into the woods? Somewhere in the field? Where, where's this?
Without having the, you know, a map in front of us to look at, it does go out into the woods. My understanding is there's a ravine towards the back of that property. It stops short of that.
Okay. Yeah, that, for those of you who haven't walked in those woods, the ravine is right because it's kind of the beginning of the railroad go-through there.
Thanks.
All right, thank you for the question. Gives us a bit of viewpoint of what that road extension would do if ever being proposed to build. And I think if we ever go to build it, we'd be coming back to the town meeting looking for funding and stuff like that anyways. So, there it is. It's the Care Drive extension. Are there further questions? Yes. Thank you. I love these young guys getting up and running for the microphone like their knees don't bother them.
It might be a side question, but if there's a development or a road into that field, and the library currently utilizes it for story walks for childrens and families, would the town consider putting a story walker and outside activity for a library to get kids outside and reading in a different part of the property there?
Okay, it sounds like a statement of a wish and a good wish. You, it's a good suggestion.
I think it's a great suggestion, and I'm sure the town will work with the Board of Library Trustees on devising how we move that to a location that makes sense if we're disturbing where they're using today.
And I'm sure if the day ever came, there'd be a nice sidewalk right down to the senior center with a crosswalk going over the library. If the day ever came. All right, so Article Six, further question. No questions appearing. All those in favor of Article Six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Article Six has passed unanimously. Article Seven, Acceptance of the Public Works Boulevard Layout. To see if the town will vote to accept the layout of the Public Works Boulevard as a public way by the following description. And it is quite a lengthy description. It's submitted by the Select Board. Yes.
May I have a second?
We have a motion and a second putting Article Six, Public Works, yeah, Article Seven, Public Works Boulevard, in front of us. And I, like you, had presumed that the Public Works Boulevard was already a town-laid-out road that we had clean and clear ownership of. So, this, this makes, defines the roadway and enters it into the Chapter 90 funding, et cetera, et cetera, as a public way, which it was not really before. It wasn't recorded as an actual roadway. So, that's where this article is at. Does it cause question, concern? No questions on Article Seven. Everybody, please signify their acceptance by saying aye.
Aye.
And they're opposed, saying nay. That was unanimously. The voice in the background was commenting to their neighbor, not to the article, so these hearing aids are good. Sometimes they drive me wacky. Article Eight, Acceptance of the Relocation of the Highland Avenue Layout. To see if the town will vote to accept the relocation of Highland Avenue as a public way by the following description. And there it is. It's submitted by the Select Board.
May I have a second?
Motion to accept as printed, which has been seconded. So, this is Highland Avenue in Irving, Mass, and it defines its boundaries. Are there questions related to that? And it is surprising that we haven't had these things tidied, but we found that they were not tidy. So, this is really cleaning up some old stuff. What, Brian? Some of it's from the '30s? Yeah, from the '70s. Some of it was actually from the '30s. So, we've got these roadways that aren't properly defined in our records here. So, we're fixing that. Question on Highland Avenue? No questions appearing. All those in favor of Article Eight, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Article Eight has passed unanimously. Article Nine is the Acceptance of the Relocation of the Pleasant Street Layout. To see if the town will vote to accept the relocation of Pleasant Street as a public way by the following description. And there's an east side description and a west side description. It's submitted by the Select Board.
May I have a second?
We have a motion and a second down here to accept Article Nine as printed. So, Pleasant Street, we're tidying things up there, just like the other ones. Does anyone have question related to Pleasant Street? Okay, no questions appearing. All those in favor of Article Nine, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Article Nine has passed unanimously. Article Ten, we're off of those roadways for a minute here, and we're looking at this one. Article Ten, Joining the Pioneer Valley Mosquito Control District. Cost of $5,000 as an annual membership, and it's from free cash. It's submitted by the Select Board, and the Finance Committee recommends approval.
May I have a second?
Motion to accept as printed, which has been seconded. Thank you very much for the voices to help this move right along. All right, Mosquito Control District, somewhat self-explanatory, however. Does anybody care to speak to Mosquito Control District to help us understand what we're doing? Are we buying, you know, hyper blasting a DDT all over everybody's face, or are we controlling mosquitoes in a much more comfortable way?
Well said, and that's the concerns that brought this to the board. So, we had some concerns.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, from the public with regards to the state doing blanket spraying of, for mosquito control in these areas. And the Conservation Commission also spoke with us about concerns regarding that, so we chose to try, attempt to opt out, which was denied, and our, our representation at the state level, senators have helped with trying to understand why and how to move forward in future years and developing a mosquito control district that would look at how we handle this in alternative ways would be more, we believe would be more successful at the state level. So, this is us joining that effort with other communities.
Okay, trying to keep equine and cephalitis and other things from being part of our life the way it is more or less heavily in Connecticut. Yes, sir.
I'd just like to say something about this mosquito spraying. I mean, it's bad for people, animals, insects, vegetation, the environment. I mean, we just, it's no good, you know? You can protect yourself from mosquitoes by wearing a net or clothing or whatever. I don't know if anybody's ever died from a mosquito bite. And that's my feeling about it. That's...
Thank you for coming up and sharing.
Just, just to make sure it's clear, directionally, this is opposed to that and finding alternative methods that are not blanket spraying by joining this district. That's the, some of the mission statement of what this group is trying to do in this area where we don't have some of the concerns that the city and more densely populated areas in Massachusetts that the state is trying to control have. So, just directionally, this is not encouraging spraying, blanket spraying. This is looking at other ways to handle it without having to do that, so.
Okay, that's a, that's an excellent viewpoint to know. Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's helpful to clarify that a yes vote to this is our best next step to oppose spraying. Is that correct? Yeah, okay. What's, what is the, what is the, whatever it's called, committee or potential member of the Pioneer Valley Mosquito Control District? And, you know, what other towns are part of that or hoping to be part of that? And do we know what that looks like, or this is just more like, this is a hope that these towns can get together and we need just a little bit of seed money to start the process?
It's an excellent question, and they're formulating their thoughts.
We'll give you a two-part answer. Yes, this is just the beginning, just trying to figure out how to form and create a space that allows us to do something different than the state wishes to. And in terms of what towns have already adopted or are planning to, I will turn that over to our town administrator to speak to.
Just a little more clarification. The state actually already has, sorry to feedback, regional mosquito control districts. The Pioneer Valley one already exists, but the membership has predominantly been in Hampshire and Hampden County. After this most recent concern with the spraying activities of the state, many Franklin County towns tried to opt out. They were denied. So, many of our neighbors, Berniston, Deerfield, others are joining the Pioneer Valley, so a collective action can happen in a coordinated effort.
Great. Well, I would just say thank you for, to the town and the, working with the state rep to give us an alternative to this, spreading the poison around here on our town. Thanks.
Yeah, and my joking comment about blasting DDT in our faces was just meant as humor because this is avoiding DDT in our faces, which you can spray anyways. Yes.
So, I am in support of this article as well. I just wanted to make a suggestion that the town keep the residents informed about what the procedure is, how do we opt out, when do we opt out, and what the alternatives are. That's basically my request.
Thank you. By the way, for people who don't like mosquitoes, bat boxes. Look it up on Google, figure out what you got to do, build yourself a bat box, hang it on the, way up high on your house or on a tree near your house, follow the directions. And by gosh, we have a summer cottage up in New Hampshire on a lake that is a mosquito-ridden place, and ever since the bats came to live, it's a much more pleasant place. And they're also fun to watch at sunset, watch them swoop over the lake and pick up mosquitoes. So, all that said, is there further comment on Article Ten? Okay, Article Ten, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
Article Ten has passed with a majority. Article Eleven is to authorize the disposition of Seventeen Moore Street. And I'm going to read the whole article because I'm going to fill in the blanks on the map block and lot. So, when we come to an, a motion, please, as read unless I really botch the reading here. Article Eleven, to authorize disposition of Seventeen Moore Street. To see if the town will vote to transfer from the board or offer currently having control for current purpose for which the property is held to the Select Board for the purpose of disposition by lease, sale, or otherwise, the care, custody, management, and control of the property and structures thereon known as the former Irving Public Library located on Seventeen Moore Street and shown on the assessor's maps as Map Four, Block Five, Lot Sixteen, and to authorize the Select Board to rent, convey, or otherwise dispose of all or portion of said property pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30B, Section 16, upon such terms and conditions as the Select Board deems to be in the best interest of the town, and further to authorize the Select Board to take such actions and execute such documents and agreements as are necessary to effectuate the purpose of this article or take any other action relative thereto. It's submitted by the Select Board, and the Finance Committee recommends approval.
May I have a second?
Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
All right, thank you. All right, so this is the old Irving Public Library sitting down there, empty and forlorn and abandoned. A place of many, many good memories for our young people in our town and staffed by some wonderful and caring people, which now have this beautiful new library. But we got to do something with that old building. So, this is what the article's all about. Are there questions and/or discussions about this? Way down back.
And the area where it says dispose of, what does that entail?
It would, with the rest of the language in the article, authorize the Select Board to take any action with that property, including, you know, sale or, you know, disposal, sale portion, you know, breaking that up and allowing a portion to go to a different party, anything like that. Dispose of generally is related to sale. So, I'm missing something. That's, that's generally what the dispose of portion is referring to.
Yeah, a little bit of legalese that hands down from the state about how you handle things like this, but dispose of. It's sell it, bulldoze- So sell it would be a good option if there's somebody who wants to buy. And that, of course, would go out to a public bid process, correct? So if you're interested in owning the old Irving Public Library and making something out of it, if it goes up for sale, it'd be a public bid process. Further question on Article 11. No questions appearing. All those in favor of Article 11 as read, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no? Article 11 has, as read, has passed unanimously. Article 12, to authorize acquisition of a Pratt Street easement. And it lists two Pratt Street and a safety signal device in the article. It's submitted by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee recommends approval. Motion to accept is printed with a second? Turns out we have a traffic signal that we don't have proper easement for. Is that correct? And the landowner right there where the traffic signal is has graciously allowed us to come forward and take that piece of land for the traffic signal that's already there. So this cleans up that question. Is that about right? Yeah, that's about right. Okay. Are there further question and/or discussion on what Article 12 does? No questions and/or discussion on Article 12? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no? Article 12 has passed unanimously. All right, we're down to Articles 13 and 14. And you know, if Article 14 was something related to the school or some other funding, we'd do it now. But Article 14 is really related to Article 13. So if we approve or disapprove Article 13, it affects what we do with Article 14. So the order of events is proper, as laid out in this special town meeting. So many of you are here for this exact article, and I would remind you of the Selectmen's preamble, but also the way we've been conducting ourselves so far. You raise your hand, I acknowledge you, you go to the microphone, and we have a courteous discussion with each other about this article. So Article 13, to add Section 8.3 of the zoning bylaw, to see if the town will vote to amend Town of Irving zoning bylaws by adding Section 8.3 Planned Unit Development as presented at the November 18, 2021 Planning Board Public Hearing pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A. And that Section 8.3 is listed. It's Planned Unit Development, that I would love to call PUD as an abbreviation, but some other people have decided to call it the PUD. Whichever way we refer to it, we know what we're talking about. It's this Planned Unit Development. It's submitted by the Planning Board and the Select Board recommends approval. Motion to accept as printed with a second? And that puts it in front of us for discussion. Without those motions, we couldn't even talk about it. Go watch the Congress work someday. You'd no idea what they're talking about with all their motions and amendments. We try to keep it so we know what we're talking about here in the town of Irving. So thank you. Article 13 now is in front of us for discussion. Do we have a presentation about what it does and doesn't do that we'd like to discuss before we open to general questions? We do. Are you the presenter of the presentation? Would you like a microphone? Yes. You're gonna, okay, come on over here then. Yes. And you are?
I'll, I'll...
Come on up and self-introduce.
Hi, I'm Mariah Kurtz. I'm the Assistant Town Planner. I think I've met a lot of you, but I haven't met all of you. I've been working for the town for about two and a half years, so the pandemic hit kind of right after I started. So it's great to see so many new faces. I'm just going to set up my presentation, and it should be relatively short, and hopefully answers a lot of questions, clarifies a few things of what the Planned Unit Development
Nice path. Part of what I do for a living, I travel to customer job sites in the water control business, and I got my laptop and I got my presentation for teaching about the valve or the operating system people are going to have. And my biggest nightmare is the moment comes when I need to connect, and it does not connect. I think you're connected. I hope most of you can see that well enough with the light coming through, the skylight and things, but you can see it well enough to, to follow along. It's not going to be a real long presentation, but it's enough so that you understand the parts and pieces and the why. You're welcome to get up and go around and, if you want to, stand on the sideline. I can see her screen, so I'm good. And her pathway.
So this is a very similar presentation as to what I presented in the fall. Part of my job as the Assistant Town Planner is assisting all of our boards and commissions. And so for the past year and a half, I've been working with the Planning Board on updating some zoning bylaws. There's various changes. You've all gotten postcards about some of the public hearings. Some of you have attended, which has been awesome. We love being able to explain to people what's going to happen before we get to this point. And so just kind of an overview of the process. So starting in fall 2020, the Planning Board started discussing some zoning updates, and I was able to attend meetings to help them through that process of kind of visioning what updates needed to be done. At that time, they started drafting a Planned Unit Development Overlay District, or the PUD, and with that, an updated map. In November, we held a public hearing, we sent out postcards to the residents, a legal ad ran in the recorder twice. Information was available at Town Hall, the library, and on the town website. I know quite a few people had looked at the library, which was awesome. It's really nice to have a nice new library to post information like this for people to see just on their way to do other things. And then this winter, the Select Board discussed it. They put it on the special town meeting warrant, and that brings us to today where we need a two-thirds vote for this to be approved. So what changes are being proposed and why? So the changes that are being proposed are the Planned Unit Development Overlay District, which is this current article that we're talking about. And then the next article is the updated map. And to be concise, and because they're kind of interrelated, this presentation is going to cover both, but do know that they're separate articles. So, you know, even if the PUD is not approved, the zoning map updates could be amended on the floor to approve the other changes on the map without that. So why are these changes being proposed? It's a variety of reasons. We want to better match existing development patterns. So if you're looking at the street and it looks different than what the map does, it's a little bit confusing. So we want to match what currently exists. We also want to encourage commercial or residential development in appropriate places. Offering options to developers in certain areas which lend themselves to larger-scale development or commercial development so that it's, it can be found in the right locations. And then having zoning that encourages aesthetically pleasing development, which takes into account, you know, abutters neighbors, modes, different modes of transportation, and environmental considerations. So we're trying to think about this holistically. So the Planned Unit Development Overlay District is a tool in our zoning toolbox. And zoning is something that is really boring until it's not, which is probably why you're all here. It's not very interesting, it's a lot of legalese, it can be kind of hard to understand, which is why it's a lot easier to have a conversation about it than to read, like, what's written in the warrant. So it allows for campus-style development as a comprehensive plan for a unified site design. So usually when you're zoning something, or when you're, you know, developing a property, say you're going to build a house, you're allowed to have one main building with a main use on one parcel. That's great if you're building a house, that's all you need, or you're building one structure that's going to house a building. It's not great if you have an old mill building, or you're trying to build, you know, some offices that are going to be in multiple locations, but they are all going to work together. So this allows us to redevelop some of our, or, excuse me. It would allow a tool, if a developer would come in and they wanted to redevelop a mill property or to build a cluster of buildings, it's a tool. I want to be very clear, this does not change what is allowed in those areas. It is just a tool that a developer and the Planning Board can use. It offers the Planning Board control over the process, and it offers a developer a different style, a different approach of zoning and building. So as you can read in the actual text of this, it has five main components. It encourages flexibility in design with a carefully controlled process. It promotes the use of multiple-story buildings in a campus-like clustering of buildings to maximize open space, which might sound kind of scary when you're thinking about like multi-story buildings in Irving. Are we talking about towers or something or not? We're really talking about if you think a three-story old mill building, or like a three-story office building. Nothing crazy, you know, it could be a two-story. Just the idea that you're not just a sprawling area with, with lots of buildings and taking up lots of open space. You're thinking about putting buildings together so that they're, it's easy to get to one another, it's easy if you're visiting something, to visit multiple places. And then you have open space all around it, which can be enjoyed by children, by people who are looking to recreate, and just by sitting and looking at it. And that's number three, encouraging less sprawl. It fosters more economic development to have that, and it consumes less land. It's better for our environment, our animals, all of that. It's an efficient procedure, so for the Planning Board, it offers structure and the right tools for them to review this process, which makes things more clear, it makes them happen faster, and it offers more, more input. And then it offers highly coordinated building design and site design, which can buffer adjacent residential uses. So if you're thinking about a large parcel, if you had buildings all over the parcel, they'd be much closer to the neighbors than if they were clustered in the center and they had open space around them. We're not the only ones doing this. A lot of our nearby towns have it. Berniston, Monague, Sunderland, Deerfield, and Amherst, they all have it. And so, you know, we're not on the, on the cutting edge here. We're kind of, it's very similar language in all of those towns. So this is just another summary of what the PUD does and does not do. So it maximizes open space and preserves scenery, multiple buildings and uses on one lot, just like we're already seeing in a lot of our historical structures. It's one shared driveway, so if you have five businesses that are clustered in a use, they don't each have their own driveway, which can cause traffic concerns, and it takes up a lot of space with pavement. They would have shared driveways, they would have maybe shared parking areas. It's really trying to maximize the most of one type of use. And then it would require a special permit and a site plan review. So again, this is not like allowing something that is not currently on the use table, it's more the process that they're going through. And then it buffers adjacent properties, keeps the Planning Board in control. What it does not do is change what uses are allowed. It doesn't override the Wetlands Protection Act, so that doesn't make it so that you could build a building in a wetland where you currently cannot. And it doesn't select one type of development, so it doesn't select housing is going to go here, or a, a commercial business is going to go here. It's just a tool. So that's the PUD. I hope that was a clear overview. Now I'm going to present on the, the map changes, which are actually the next article, but because the PUD has to go on the map as an overlay district, the PUD is also included in this. So I tried to make this as clear as I could with, on the left side is the current zoning map, on the right side is the proposed map. And you can see there are some differences. And then at the bottom is a summary of the changes on each, each section of the map. So the, one change is that the French King Commercial District will just become the French King District, and the initials will become FK instead of C, so it's a little bit easier to read. The PUD Overlay District will be added to the area zoned as the French King District. And the eastern edge of the French King and the PUD districts, which are overlaid on each other, will be set back from the edge of the river to align with conservation restrictions. This is River Road. One side of River Road was Village Residential, and one side was Rural Residential. That didn't make a lot of sense to myself and the Planning Board. So this proposed change is that 450 feet back from River Road on the west side, it would be Village Residential, so that it matches on both sides of the road. This is still in Irving's side. The PUD, well, right now it's zoned so that all of the white on the current map is Rural Residential. The yellow is a commercial district, and then the, the green is the Village Residential. So, or Central Village, I'm sorry, is the yellow. So a PUD would be overlaid where the CV is, and the CV would extend back a little. So right now, if you think about, like, the Renovator Supply property, it actually extends somewhat beyond where the CV currently stops, and it's, and it's developed back there, there are buildings. So the Planning Board actually visited that site and thought that it made sense to have the Central Village Zone cover the entirety of the currently developed area. So that would be extended, and then the PUD would cover that area. You can also see that along the western side of Gunn Street, that is CV. On the eastern side of Gunn Street, it is VR. Again, it doesn't make a lot of sense that one side of the street is zoned one way and the other side of the street is zoned another. So we matched that so that Gunn Street would be Village Residential on both sides. Then we looked at Warner Street and River Street and the other side of Strachan Street, and thought that it made more sense to have those be Village Residential. That's really how they're currently developed, and so we thought that we would match the current development. And then beyond what is currently developed, along the westernmost portion is really all, like, riverfront and, and woods. And so that would remain Rural Residential. And I think that's it for these. I'm just going to double check before I move on. I believe that's it. So this is Northfield Road and Care Drive. So on the left, you can see that Central Village extends along Route 2 and the railroad tracks and Northfield Road, just about until the edge of Lilian's Way into the middle of the elementary school parcel. And then it turns into Rural Residential, which is the white. Again, that didn't make a lot of sense to stop Central Village in the middle of the elementary school parcel, and especially considering that Care Drive has now been developed some, and there are potentially plans in the future. We thought that it made more sense to extend Central Village through to the senior center parcel edge and have the PUD Overlay District cover the extension, and then matching that on the other side of the road. and have the PUD overlay district cover the extension, and then matching that on the other side of the road. So this is down in the Prospect Street, Paper Mill Road, and Route 2 area. Again, the CV, the yellow, suddenly stops along one side of the street, but it keeps going on the other. So we extended CV to match that. And then we added the Planned Unit Development Overlay District onto the properties, which are the IP Mill properties. We're now in Irving Center on the other side of the map. So this is the western end of Irving Center. You can see West Main Street along the bottom there. On the left, you'll see that Central Village has kind of a winding western edge. I believe that was intended to follow a brook that kind of no longer exists there, or if it does, it's very seasonal. It made sense to us on the map to really square that off and just make it very clear where that boundary was. And that is set back 1,000 feet from the road, which it was in, in the original as well. Again, in Irving Center, so the current map on the left, you see a lot of squiggly lines. And it was 1,000 feet back from Route 2. This is the eastern section of Irving Center, kind of across from the Paper Mill, and including the Paper Mill. And so we squared off that edge. The western edge is actually the State Forest. So we squared it off so that the State Forest wasn't zoned there, even though it will not be developed anyways. We felt, felt that it just looked cleaner on the map to really show that. And then we changed it so that 750 feet back from Route 2, and then the Planned Unit Development Overlay District would be on both sides of the road encompassing the properties that the mill owns. This is a much more zoomed-out screenshot that shows Village Residential up Church Street, North Street, High Street, up to Swamp Road. Again, we had Village Residential zoned on the State Forest. It doesn't matter because it likely won't be developed anyways, but we felt it looked cleaner, so we just kind of followed the edge of the State Forest. Same thing at Swamp Road, we just cleaned up the edges there. And that's it. So I think my part's done here, unless people have more questions, but I will let you work on that.
All right. Excellent presentation, thank you very much. A lot of homework there. And you could, you could help me out with a quick question.
Yeah.
So you could clarify a quick question for me. I said at the beginning of our, our get-together for Article 13 here, which is the Planned Unit Development Article, that if, you know, Article 13 were to be defeated, that Article 14 becomes a moot point. I'm seeing it doesn't.
It doesn't? It would need to be amended on the floor, so.
To remove the Public Utilities District.
The Planned Unit Development.
Yep, yep. Planned Unit Development, PUD. Right, so Article 14 still remains germane, and therefore all these maps remain germane, or appropriate to our discussions. We would just have to amend Article 14 if the PUD goes down. So I'm sure we'll call on you for some expertise as this goes along. And I know many of you are here exactly for this article. So let's have a good time and get together and ask some questions, and satisfy our curiosity, and see what we want to do. I open this up to discussions unless there's further comment from here at the moment? No? Okay. Anybody with a question, concern? Hi, Jeff. So under dimensional requirements, the 400 feet of frontage, does that have to be the access to the property?
I believe so, yeah. It doesn't change the requirement of where, where the access comes from. It would just be that, to qualify for the PUD, you would have to have the 400 feet of frontage.
So because you're not on the microphone, and we are on television, I'll restate. In 8.3.4E Use Regulations, subdivision of lots within a planned unit development after final approval of the site plan or special permit shall be considered an amendment to the special permit and will require approval by the planning board. And you're asking about the dimensional requirements? Okay, are there written dimensional requirements?
So this would, you would still be subject to the subdivision by law. So this does not offer new, you know, parameters on what those subdivision lots could be. It's just saying that if, if a subdivision of lots is proposed, that we'd have to amend the site plan or special permit. So like, if you had an approval of this, and then you decided five years later that you want to subdivide this new thing that you've built, you would have to go back to the planning board to have an amendment done. So it's not changing how you subdivide it, it's just saying if you go through this process and then you're changing it, you have to go back and go through the process, you know, with an amendment with the planning board.
Yep. Would you like? Would you like to take a microphone? Okay.
So they could, just like anyone can try. It doesn't mean that that will happen. So any, anyone can, you know, petition to have that happen, but that doesn't mean that it will. It would just be a shared driveway. Sorry, what was that? It's not required. Right, so it would be reviewed in the special permit and the site plan, and it would be, you know, depending on the project and the location, the planning board would determine whether they felt that that was necessary, or, you know, yeah, whether they felt that was necessary. Yes, and it would follow under the water and wastewater regulations. So again, this isn't overriding any of those other regulations. It's just, just this specific regulation. This one? This doesn't show, like, like the, the center of Irving Center. Yep. You're welcome.
And thank you, Jeff, for the excellent questions. I believe we have somebody at the microphone over here. Come on up. And thank you for rolling up to the microphone and saying hello.
Good morning. My name is Moonlight Davis, and I appreciate your time. My question, or my first question, I only have two, is over a period, in five years, what does the change of the zoning? I mean, how does, what do we have to do to, there's some concerns about the way it's, it's fixed up, and you cleaned it up, so it looks nice. But what does that mean for businesses coming in, or more apartments coming up, or housing in the community? What does that look like over the longer period? Not just for now, and not just for it looking like it's cleaned up? If I'm, if I'm making myself understood at all?
Right, so projecting down the road, regarding potential development, you're asking what these changes could do?
Yeah, I mean, you, you know, you're making, you're, you're changing the zoning, and does that allow businesses or people with other ideas to come in? And are we looking at what goes on in the future, or are we just looking at what's the next two years?
Okay, good question. Can I address it, or anybody in the select board?
I'm happy to try, and if.
Yep, go ahead.
So, thank you. It's a great question, Moonlight. This would affect zoning going forward, unless there are changes made in the future, if it was approved today. This, this could attract people who want to bring their businesses to Irving, or people who are already in Irving who want to, you know, develop property that they already own. It also, it's mostly affecting our mill buildings, which are already there, one of which the town is currently working on a property redevelopment, a request for proposal. And I think that that was one of the things that was maybe confused in some of the comments that I've gotten from people, is whether this was just for that. And it's not, it's covering five areas in town. We, I, I want to be careful that we're considering those as, as separate things. They, they are related, but they are not the same thing. I don't know if that answers your question, but I'm, yeah.
Well, the second question is about River Street and about the property behind going to the river. So I understand the neatness of it, but when you added the extra property to that, what did that do for, for the people that own those houses that you extended their property back to the river? You know, when you made, when you made the, the, the extension, you included on River Street some property that goes back to the river. And, and what I was trying to ask was, does that now belong to the people that own that property? Or is that still town property, or how does that look?
So, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's, that's all right, I'll take that. The, the change in zoning or adding an overlay district does not change any ownership of property. It doesn't change what a current property, it, it, does potentially change what a current property owner can do in those parcels?
It does.
It does. If their zoning was different prior, or if they were not in a planned use development before, then now they can have the ability to utilize the planned unit development process and zoning if adopted, in, in conjunction with the existing zoning. It doesn't replace it, and it doesn't bypass it, but it would be in addition to. And if I may to your, back to your first question, the, you know, longer-term looking at this, some of the zoning changes that the planning board proposed here, that the board reviewed, we feel aligns the neighborhood better. So where we've extended zoning, existing zoning slightly further, or changed the boundary to exclude the State Forest, where it can't be done anyway. So it's things that seem to be logical, and would be advantageous to the properties that are there. Not, and in alignment with the neighborhoods they're in. And in terms of the planned unit development specifically, it allows another approach. Kind of, I think you mentioned, you know, does this offer something, a different, a different way, and a different idea about how to do some development, and that's what this does. It does not change or remove the existing zoning requirements in those areas. It just adds some additional alternative methods to approach large, complex property development, of which these overlays are in areas where, in general, are, have been prior mill complexes. So that is the type of development the town has lived with, seen in those areas. And so this would allow future development to align with the structures and the, and the footprints that are already there, in creative ways to, to potentially make those properties relevant in the, in the next decade.
Thank you. I'd like to thank you, Mariah, for what you've done. You did a lot of work, you and Deborah did a lot of work on it. My, my concern is that there may be some blind spots in the future that we'll need to look at to see what we did with all of this. That's my concern. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, Moonlight.
Okay, yep, up to the microphone here, we'll take the next discussion.
Just a little clarification. I, I understand that you talked to the present owners of Irving Paper Mill and Renovators Supply, and they are in favor of the PUD?
Yes.
And just to keep in mind, the zone, the original zoning map was created in, we approved it in 2005, so it was created in 2004. That was a long time ago, and technology has changed a lot, and allows us to align more things. So I'm in favor of the changes, tightening it up and, and making it a little more easier and user-friendly for the people living in those areas. Like, one side shouldn't be Rural Residential, which is a two-acre minimum and 225 feet of frontage. And across the street is a half acre and 125 feet of frontage. And frontage is what you need in order to make a, to build. And the thing to keep in mind is, you already have a layer of zoning. So the PUD doesn't take any of that away. They still have to follow all those rules. It really does give the planning board, and the town, and you, another layer of scrutiny should we decide, or should the other mills be redeveloped. It gives us more input. You guys did a great job. Thank you.
And thank you for your comments. I have been allowing this discussion to include zoning, even though technically I should, should have chopped that off and said, no, we're talking about the planned unit development, not the next article zoning. But I've been allowing this to mix, as long as we're all staying on track. I'm cool with that. Are you cool with that? Okay, go ahead, sir.
Hi, Mike Schaefer. Yeah, I've looked at these maps a lot, and Moonlight just pointed out something I hadn't noticed. On the River Street, he said that the Central Village now went to the river, which it didn't do before, across from Renovators. It might, I don't know if that was intentional or not. I, I don't think it should personally, but.
Yeah, so thank you. So I want to be very, very clear about something. Zoning does not override the Wetlands Protection Act, which is what the Conservation Commission enforces, which means this, just because something is zoned up to a wetland or a river, that parcel is zoned that way, but they're still subject to laws about setbacks from wetlands, about what they are or not, are or are not allowed to do near those wetlands, or rivers, or any kind of protected land. So just because the, the green on the right side goes up to the river, or the, the yellow, the orange color does not go all the way, but it goes a little bit further, that doesn't mean that someone is suddenly going to be able to build a mansion straight up to the river. They're still subject to all of the rules that they are currently subject to.
Thank you.
Yep, existing zoning is only overlaid by the Public Utilities District, not changed by it. Sitting in the chair right there is our next speaker, I'm sorry. But, but you can get in the on-deck circle. Baseball delayed, oh my gosh.
The one thing I noticed about this is we're talking about development. We are kind of in a, between a rock and a hard place. Because if you develop these buildings, and you put people in here, what are they going to do? I mean, if you live. I mean, if you live in this particular area, you have to more or less create your own, what you do, and how you, how you do things. If we put up these buildings, and we put up these developments, okay, the developers spend, say, $5 million to put up the housing and stuff, the town is going to be stuck with $25,000, dealing with their other things to keep the people happy. If you go into someplace like Northampton, and you try to live there, you're going to find it's an altogether different environment. So these zoning laws, you're going to be very careful in how you change them. And I don't really see you addressing that part of it. You only address, put them up, and then let someone else deal with the problems afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you. One of the things I was informed of this week is, the planned unit development zoning bylaw is not about building low-income housing. It is about creating a process by which anybody who wants to develop an existing property in the town of Irving, that's in the plan unit development area, that somebody would have to follow. So, is there some element of housing that's possible in here? Yes, but it's not about housing. It's about a process by which you take an old property, and you redevelop it. So the minute I heard about this, I was excited. This is me taking my moderator hat off for a second. The minute I heard about this, I was excited. Oh, so we can take the old International Paper Building, and we can put in some, a restaurant and a brew pub, and we can have some doctor's offices, or things like that, and maybe some retail, some artisans, and some shops? This sounds really cool. It does. Now, is the housing question real? Well, yes and no. In our current zoning, what is it, four units? We can only have four units of housing on an existing parcel in our current zoning. So, that almost says this Public Utilities District does not allow massive housing to occupy one of these spaces. But there is a process by which somebody could find their way through that. So, that being said, we're not really talking about hundreds of people moving into town, but we're talking about lots of businesses finding potential to do things here in the town of Irving. Now, I'll put my moderator hat back on, because I've had my say. And I hear we have a comment up front.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, I just want to point everyone back to Section 8.3.4A, which specifically says, this does not allow any uses that are not already allowed in the underlying zoning that already exists. So our zoning restrictions on housing that exist today are not superseded by this, nor does it change what those requirements are. So, in terms of a housing development, if they were looking to use the planned use development proposed zoning, if it was adopted, it does not change the existing housing regulations on, you know, amount, division, all of that.
Okay, you're on deck with a question.
This is like baseball. I'm just, I'm a little late to the party in terms of understanding this. The planned unit development, so we're talking about primarily businesses? This is primarily affecting businesses? Potential bringing in, is that what you're, we're all, you're saying up here? Like, what is it?
What is it? The next one, question.
Well, I just did a whole presentation on what it is, but.
I was asleep.
All right, well, I'll catch you up to speed. So, it can be used for any kind of development that's allowed where the development would go. So if it's, you know, if a business is allowed in the district, which all of where the PUDs currently are would allow that, then, and the developers came in, or it's already there, you know, I'm imagining, we have two mill buildings that are already active with businesses, and they wanted to do a project there, they could use this tool to affect the process and layout of the project. It does not allow or disallow anything new than what the use table and all of these other regulations, like the water, and sewer, and Wetlands Protection Act allow or don't allow.
Yeah, I'm getting that, but I mean, what, it sounds like it's a tool that allows them to do what is there already? Like, why are we, why does this matter, then? If this is just, oh, you could use the PUD for what's happening, but it doesn't change anything? That's what I'm hearing. So, it's got to change something. Like, what is it changing?
So, a lot of it is paperwork. So trying to redevelop a parcel that has multiple buildings on it, where that would otherwise not, not, you would not do that today. If it was a blank parcel, and you came in and you did that under the current zoning, you wouldn't be allowed to do that, or you would have to go file a bunch of variances. This allows someone to do that project with paperwork, but it's a different kind of paperwork that's a more controlled and efficient process. So they would have their site plan review, and they would have their special permit, but they wouldn't, they wouldn't be like trying to tie up all of these loose ends from, you know, 50 or 100 years ago, when this was built, when zoning wasn't around. So part of it is the paperwork and just the process. And then there are, you know, there's three mill buildings that are part of this, and then there's, you know, also two parts that are not currently developed with this style of manner.
Okay, that is helpful. So meaning, like, a developer would look at that abandoned one, that's in Irving's side, the abandoned mill, and they'd say, "Well, that's a lot of paperwork, that's part of, that's part of my..." No, but it might be easier, so the process would be easier. Is that what we're saying with that?
That is part of it. The other part of it, that I think's important, is the Section 832, you know, 831 and 832, purpose and applicability. The idea that it becomes a comprehensive plan that addresses the entire site, rather than one by one, every variance, or every change that has a different regulation is addressed individually. Instead, this encourages an entire comprehensive approach to the site, when a developer's looking to do something. And, you know, using some of those sites where there's already multi-building, and some of the things that are there are grandfathered the way they are, how do they then turn those into something that fits the town of Irving? And that's the bigger piece for me personally, not just as a select board member, is, this gives the planning board a lot more input and authority, and therefore the town, in how that's going to look, and how that development would exist when they're done. And that, to me, gives us a better ability to make sure that fits with everyone's image, and what Irving is to us, as opposed to just some black and white, they go through, and they get this exception, and this exception, and this exception, and then they can do what that allows. This requires more comprehensive involvement with the town on what is a holistic view of that site. And gives the planning board authority to oversee and regulate, to some degree, above and beyond what the current zoning does. So this is actually, you could, you can look at it as a positive, that allows a developer some more strategic and concise path through the zoning that already exists. And you can also look at it on the other side, that it also allows the planning board and the town more authority and ability to regulate how that will look.
That's great, that's helpful, thanks. It's part of you saying, you know, this is like the Irving that we want, and for me, I love the idea of cluster and all that kind of stuff, that's great, that sounds wonderful. But the other part of Irving that I love is the nature, so I'm wondering if we can go through the maps and just say how things change with that, especially the River Road one? Especially interested in that. Would you mind doing that, in terms of where the overlay is? Because it especially seems like the, that PUD.
You're talking about this one?
Um...
Or where the paper mill?
No, the one where the paper mill is, yeah, oh, right back there.
This one?
Yeah, yeah. So what's the white now on the left? White is what?
Rural residential.
Rural residential, okay. And so, for example, sorry, TV viewers. Yeah, 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 this is the two, this is the Renovator Supply, but I'm interested especially in this canal, which is, this is the canal, is that right? That goes, that was man-built in whatever, and goes into the wetlands area that is Scotts Creek dumps into, is that right?
Yes. So the canal is not currently visible, like you see on the map. A lot of it is gone, filled in, et cetera, but yes, that is the old canal.
Okay. And why does it go so much further, closer to the river? The PUD?
So, we.
I just can't bring myself to say PUD. That's the last time I'm going to say it.
So, the PUD. So the CV part, the orange, and I apologize, I couldn't get the zoom exactly right on both of these to match, so they're zoomed in slightly differently. But the CV area, the orange area, with the PUD overlay, the red lines, goes towards the river a little bit more, because that area already has development there, there is blacktop, there's buildings, et cetera. And again, I want to stress that that does not affect the Wetlands Protection Act. So if someone was going to do a project within the buffer of the river that the Wetlands Protection Act governs, they still have to go through all of the permitting processes, DEP, with the Conservation Commission. So this is just affecting the zoning piece, not any of that piece.
Right, I understand that, but my understanding is, the canal is not covered under the Wetlands Preservation Act, because it is human-built. Is that correct?
It would be.
Or incorrect?
I, so, not being DEP, and not looking at the GIS, my understanding is that that is correct unless it is, unless it has become wetlands in that process.
Yeah.
It's a little bit complicated.
Yeah.
So, again, that canal does not come as far into the property as it once did, so when you walk around there, there is blacktop over parts where it shows on the map there is a canal. It's not water running through there.
Right, yeah, I under, yeah, but everything flows downstream. Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Okay, so, yeah, I'm not like a...
Excuse me, if I may, I just want to correct one thing, to make sure that we don't misunderstand the change.
Yeah.
The parcel that exists currently in the prior is larger than the CV zone in the prior zoning? I can't quite see, do you have the pre and post up right there, or no?
Yeah.
Okay. So, in the pre-zoning, you can see the orange section does not extend as far as the proposed does, but it is the same parcel. And our zoning says that the predominant zoning of the parcel applies to the entire parcel. So even though the existing zoning does not extend closer to the river, it still applies that way today by our current zoning regulations. So extending the boundary, and then overlaying the PUD to match, the only effective change is putting the PUD over the parcel. The CV extension is currently in effect, because it is a single parcel.
Is that on 058? Is that what we're talking about, or 05? Is that 058? Yeah, 058?
Yes, it is. So 058 extends, if we consider up north in that case, extends into the white and, you know, green wetland overlaid area, and therefore the CV zoning that is in the southern portion of that parcel applies to the entire parcel. So even though it is not shown as the boundary there, it still applies today, even if we make no changes today to zoning. So extending that boundary as the proposed, just aligns it with what is currently in effect on the parcel.
But we're looking at, yeah, it's a little funky, because there's no, there is no, where all the wetlands is currently denoted on here, in 058. There's not a boundary line where you're putting the boundary line, and on the northernmost tip of the PUD.
So your concern is wetlands, and if the concern is wetlands, the wetlands regulations override.
I, yeah, sorry, sorry not to...
Anything that our maps would show.
I'm with you.
Okay.
Is the canal wetlands-protected?
Does that...
We don't know. And so that's my biggest problem with this, is because there's active beaver dams further north of that, that is not in here, but will definitely be affected if we're putting cluster, high-density stuff here.
Yeah, do you want me to, so, that is already a building and pavement, et cetera?
Yeah.
Which is why we extended it there. I want to really reiterate what Chairman Smith said, which is, the way that our zoning is currently written, the majority of the par, and I'm not stating this exactly, so it's written differently that I'm saying this, but the majority of the parcel, if it's zoned a certain way, affects the whole parcel. So effectively, the whole parcel is CV right now, the PUD is the addition, the PUD's point is to cluster things together, so that we're not developing areas that shouldn't be developed, and all of that would be considered in the special permit and the site plan review. So I really appreciate your concern, but I think that that is addressed in other ways.
Sorry, but what are the other ways?
Which Jackie may have some insight on.
Jackie, thanks.
So, the 058 parcel, 45 acres of land. The building, the building encompasses about 13 acres, 14 acres, that's what the PUD and the new, that's what the central building, that's what it's trying to, it's covering the areas that are already existing, the buildings and caves, it's still way back. You can't see it from the road, but there's two large buildings in that, that are existing. So they are leaving, there's, you can do anything, but then they want some of the current stuff. This is just cleaning it up. Now, what's the right...
This 058, is this 058 here, all this?
That's 055.
Okay.
The white is the white, but the way that you're, right, the way that you're, you're in a mixed zone, okay, the, if you're 100% present in one zone, the other zone, you have to follow that zone. So currently, the new 058, there's more than 20% in central buildings, okay? So they're going to follow the central building development. It's not, it doesn't matter if they're more than, you still have to follow all the other rules, you know, wetlands, protection act, and all of that. It's just cleaning it up, keeping it clear of what you're building, what's already there is more likely.
And to make it more streamlined for them to develop here? Further, what's that?
They can develop any way.
Yeah. Right, but it'll just be harder for them right now, unless we approve this PUD.
Just, just a second, are you, are you picking up Jackie's voice? Jackie, please come down and take a microphone, and maybe this one, and then join in this discussion.
Yeah, if the P, sorry, but I really am trying to understand this, I'm not like a for, I'm like, I'm undecided on this right now, but if, if the PUD is to make it easier to develop, or develop further what is there already, no, it's not, is there to make it easier? Like we just said, it's not changing anything, but it's just streamlines things for the developer. Okay.
Do you mind showing her your mic? Okay. All right. Okay. So, I guess I...
Jackie, restate a little bit of what you said before.
So, just to be clear, Renovator Supply, which is their main parcel, is 058. Their other parcel, which is across the street, is 057, which is the red building that they have, that's about an acre and a half. The main building is 25 acres of land, and of that, about 13 or 14 acres is already developed with buildings on it. The new change in the zoning map just clearly covers what's already developed. Now, the rest of the 10 or 11 acres is mostly in wetlands, which you're right, which they'd have to follow the Wetlands Protection Act, all right? But the proposed PUD doesn't change anything, because they're already in Central Village, it just gives another tool for the town and the planning board, should the... It just gives another tool for the town and the planning board, should the mill be redeveloped or should the current owner want to, you know, expand on what he's already, that's kind of the, it's not a, a mill anymore. It was, you know, a tool company, and then renovators used to produce tools, and they might, a little bit now, but mostly it's a incubator, there's a lot of small businesses in there, um, and that sort of thing. So it's another tool if the owner were to want to change or use or expand the other buildings and, and that sort of thing. But it doesn't change what he can already do. Is there any questions?
Okay, I think we've covered these topics pretty nicely. You're all set. We'll get that into the microphone stand or to the person on deck, since baseball season has been delayed.
Thank you for your patience.
No. And we appreciate your comfort with a microphone and a display and your questions because that's what this is all about, understanding what we're trying to do and dispelling any rumors about what some other people thought we were trying to do. Yes?
Thank you. Uh, so, the PUD essentially, it allows a broader range of developers to propose uses for the different plots or lots available, correct? Am I understanding it correctly?
Yes, and it gives them a process.
Yes, okay. So, what is the town's process? Say we receive three proposals for one property, or only one proposal for a property. What is the town's process to review, and kind of what Jacob was hinting at earlier? What is the town's process to review? Take input and either approve or reject it? And what grounds would you have for rejection? I guess that's, that's kind of what I'm looking at. How do you, how do you make sure it meets Irving's needs and what the town wants?
Go ahead.
Grounds for what? I'm sorry, I didn't catch the last word.
Denying the, the proposal.
Understood. Uh, so I would, uh, call on the planning board chair to expand on this, but when you refer to a proposal or proposals, this is gonna be something that the planning board oversees in a parcel that's already owned by private, a private ownership. So if we're, I, I don't know the, the directionally where the question's coming from, so if you're referring to a parcel the town already owns, then that's a different conversation. If you're referring to, uh, the majority of the overlay districts, which are privately owned, then the owner or a developer they were working with would bring that through the zoning process to the planning board, and they have the oversight on the special permit and the, and the planned unit development. And so they would, um, review, you know, do site plan review, design review, make sure it met and complied with the existing zoning and that it made sense, and then, you know, within, within the boundaries of their authority to, to approve or reject.
Thank you for your question. Are you on deck with another question?
I have a question.
Okay, excellent. Further questions and or commentary? Sure thing, come on down. It's, the price is right, come on down.
I think maybe the concerns that have brought people to this meeting are about family housing. I heard someone earlier, I don't know who it was, say that only four units of family housing would be allowed per development. Can you speak to the potential for family housing in any of these given developments or redevelopments of buildings that already exist? And in light of that, if the answer isn't for, what about the capacity at the school?
Okay, so this is right to the heart of the matter. What about housing as it relates to the planned unit development, the PUD? So, who wants to field that? Okay, right there.
So, you are correct, the current zoning allows up to a three or four-family, um, housing, and I believe that's per parcel, assuming the appropriate frontage and all the other zoning requirements that go related to housing. The reality of, of more housing in any of these properties than, than what is there now or larger than four is that because we have zero affordable housing per the state's inventory, and it's law to have ten percent or more, a developer and a private landowner, or, you know, in, uh, working together, or a developer could approach a private landowner and propose a housing development that increased the affordable housing, um, units within our town, and they could bring that to the state through a chapter forty B process, and that could be approved by the state, and it could bypass all of our zoning, and we would have no say in what occurred. This happened in Sunderland recently, and they fought it, and they failed. So, when you're not at ten percent, there are methods for developers and home, and property owners at that point, that, that can fit within, um, improving affordable housing inventory in a, in a town to get to the state requirement, and they can bypass everything the town can do and go to the state to get that approval.
I know I'm joking there, but how much do you have now?
Zero.
So what happens?
It has to be deed restricted as affordable, and we have no deed restricted affordable housing at this time.
I think that added clarity to what he was saying, so thank you.
Um, so, so, to the point, our current zoning is up to four. However, there are processes to bypass that that we would not have say in, that a developer could do. And, uh, if surrounding communities are any example, the state generally approves them. So not to, not to say it will happen, we don't know of it happening or anyone doing it, uh, or, or heading in that direction currently, but it could.
So the planned unit development gives our planning board and our zoning board control to work with a potential developer in the best interest of the people of the town of Irving. But like you just said, even without the PUD, um, if somebody were to propose something that meets our zoning requirements with the exception of the number of housing units on a piece of property, the state could override us. So they are two separate things. We need this tool, but even if we didn't have this tool, that could still happen.
Any of the zoning requirements?
Any of the zoning requirements. So, so there we are, sprock in a hard place when it comes to affordable housing with the state. This just gives us control over the development at the start of it unless somebody does something different. Do you have clarity on that as well?
I do. So I think some of the concern is coming from, um, concern about the IP mill, the redevelopment of that or other town-owned properties. And I'd just like to address that directly, that that's a separate conversation, and the, um, the select board has been having conversations about that property for months at their meetings, and I, I don't want to speak for them, but they, they, I believe they are welcoming people to come to those meetings to have that conversation because it is a, you know, it's related, but it's a different specific conversation to that. We released a request for proposals, and I, I believe that the gentleman who had asked about maybe how those proposals are reviewed, um, the, the select board will review developer proposals, and those are different than someone coming to the planning board with a pud. So I think if people have concerns specifically about proposals that are coming in for that property or other town properties, the select board meeting is a better venue for that because it's a specific conversation about that topic. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that you're encouraging people to speak at that venue for that topic.
Okay, and I'll just add one more comment that came to me via Brian. A couple days ago, we talked about what was going on here at the town meeting. The PUD gives them a pathway and a plan for how a developer could work with, like the International Paper Property. And one of the things we really, really want to do as townspeople is get that iron yoke around the town's neck off of the town's neck. We want to make it an income-generating tax property, not a place where we continually throw money down a hole. So that's, the idea is to get the International Paper Building out of town ownership and get tax dollars back from that property. So this gives the tools by which to do that. I'll call in the next on-deck here. You're at bat.
Hi, most of you know me, uh, my name's Dan Hammack, um, and I support this perhaps for a different reason than many might. Um, in nineteen seventy-two, when zoning went in, I asked to be on the zoning board. I was a guy with long hair back then, and, and, uh, I was appointed as an alternate, and I've been involved with zoning ever since, been fifty years. Um, I, I asked to be on the zoning board because I did not like government control over people. I want government, control government, leave us alone. Over the years, I've changed a little bit, but in my opinion, this gives every one of you and me, gives all of us, um, more say and more input in what goes on here. I've, I've heard them say that there's control, 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 but I like the word oversight. Gives that planning board oversight about people who want to come here and do things, whether it's big property owners or outside people. It gives them oversight. The planning board does not operate in secret. They have multiple hearings. If they're gonna propose a big development, it's gonna take at least months and many times years, and a lot of public input, public hearings. So you can come to the planning board and say, you know, here's what I think you ought to do, or I favor this, against this. The other thing is, in federal regulate, federal elections, they say, oh, you can just elect somebody else. Well, you can't unless you have a hundred million dollars. But every, every year, we have planning board members elected, and if you don't like what the planning board's doing, and you don't like the way projects are going, you can elect a different planning board. Two ways that you have more control over things that are going on, not government running the whole show. They don't just do whatever they want, they listen to you, they put in a lot of work too. So, thank you.
Yep, likewise, select board moderator. We all put ourselves out there for reelection, you either up, re-up or don't. Remember the Grand Trunk Railroad project? The town was pretty well divided on yes, Grand Trunk, or no, Grand Trunk. It came to a meeting just like this, and we said no to Grand Trunk Railroad. Next on deck.
Hey, folks, uh, thank you for having me here. I did go to a select board's meeting two months ago and did do exactly what Mariah said, and I thank you for your time, and you folks were very courteous there, and I appreciate that. Um, and I also went and met with Mariah at town hall, and you're a true professional, thank you very much. So it's nice that we can have these civil conversations about things. I generally agree with a lot of things that this does. However, I am concerned, uh, we talk about developers, and, um, officials here have mentioned that this, three times I heard that this would assist developers, it would help them, give them more options. My concern is that the only developers that have come forward are to come forward for town-owned properties. Well, yeah, two town-owned properties. The old grade school down here and the International Paper Building. Now, we own the International Paper Building. Just a few moments ago, um, the chairman mentioned that Irving has zero percent, um, how do we describe it? Affordable housing. Thank you. Um, and that a developer can, uh, petition the state and override our zoning. That only allows four, um, housing units. A developer can't do that if a developer doesn't own the property. Right now, town of Irving owns the International Paper Building. That is what has brought everybody here, that's the elephant in the room, right? So I know we could talk about that at other venues, but that's why everyone's, most everyone is here. Um, and the concern amongst people with the planned unit development is, like I said, three times, um, officials have said that will assist developers to come in. The only developments that have been proposed from their request for information in December were two multi-housing unit developments of sixty-plus units at the International Paper Building. I won't get into all the financials, we talked for an hour in our meeting at that time, and that is, I guess, for a different time, I suppose, at town meeting. Can I ask a clarifying question? Is that town meeting, that, that going to come up? The four units to the select board at your meeting mentioned that you did not want limits on housing units. Right now, it's four. Is that coming up at town meeting?
Very good question, and, and yes, probably, and, and let me just elaborate if, if I may. The select board did request that the planning board consider adjusting our use table to a, uh, change the language of what a multi-unit home was, and to remove the, the cap that's there now, and to add special permit in an, in an additional zones in the table. It would still fall under special permit, it would still be regulated, it's not just freely opened. We request that, that of the planning board, they held a hearing, they recommended some changes. We, uh, have reissued our request with those, uh, changes to the planning board, and they will be holding public hearings and meetings about that for the public to weigh in on that proposal. And then, assuming we just, uh, all move to go forward with it, it would be put on an annual town meeting or a special town, it would be on a, on a town meeting if, if we move it forward.
Okay, thank you for that. And so what were the requests? So, at the last meeting I was at with you folks, um, it was that you wanted no limits for housing units. Now you're telling me, and that is not in a aggressive way, now you're expressing that the select board had, has asked the planning board for some changes to that. Did you put it, did you give it a, a, a limit on housing units?
I, I don't believe we did, and, uh, in discussion with the planning, we asked the planning board to consider it, and the feedback we had from them did not contain a recommendation for a limit either. I, I do just want to say that I understand that is an important issue, and I agree that that's probably some of what has driven people to be here, and that is totally understandable. And I would welcome them all to come to every discussion about the IP mill, anytime we bring zoning to, uh, to a planning board meeting, to the select board meeting, to the annual town meeting, special town meeting, to discuss it. However, it does not have anything to do with planned unit development.
It completely does. I disagree.
It does not. And the planned unit development does not change what the board has the, already has the authority to or to not do with the IP mill property, nor does it change, um, what we can do significantly.
And, and with that, I saw an article, just also for clarification, um, and I am gonna politely disagree with you on that, that there is a, a relation between the two, um, in my mind, and I think in a lot of folks' minds here. You just said the board has the authority to do these things. I saw in an earlier article, the old library, the, the board has the authority to dispose of that property, sell it, whatever. Is that the same with the IP mill, or does that have to come to a town meeting? Say, for instance, hypothetically, that, um, you agree that a developer comes in to do whatever the developer's gonna do. Does that have to come to town meeting to approve the sale to them? Or do you, the select board, have that authority?
To approve us to take, uh, action, which could include a sale, uh, it does require the public to give us that authority. I have to verify if that's already been done.
We definitely are conflating issues. Many things have, uh, overlapping layers to them, but we are definitely conflating issues. The sale of a piece of public property has a very specific process. When you take a piece of property for tax title, which is how you took this property, and, do I have any of my treasurers in the room, or former treasurers? When you take a piece of property, the quickest way to sell it is at auction, highest bidder. Doesn't matter what the use is, they can just have it. The board has elected not to do that, they've elected to use the other alternative, which is the request for proposals process. That means you design a program, designs, uh, programmatic goals, and there's a grading rubric. You're trying to find the most advantageous use for the property. So they could offer you a dollar, but because the use, the programmatic goals are higher than what the pay, the cost could have been, you end up with more control. You can put in contractual requirements for how you transition the property over, making sure financing's in place, making sure building permits are in place, before the deeds are sold over. If you hold just an auction and it's the highest bidder, you've lost all control. The sale of the IP mill does not require going back to town meeting. The ta, the treasurer could do that today, we're not doing that. They want you at public meetings, at the select board meetings, through the, the request for proposals process, to have a say in all of that. What you're asking for is that process, and they're having that public conversation with all of you. You just have to attend and, and express the concerns like you have.
Sure.
Everybody's invited to do that. I don't think you want to sell it at an auction. I really don't think that's what you want. But that doesn't mean that the, uh, the process has somehow been flawed, it's definitely not being skewed towards residential. One proposal came forward in the information process that suggested that's how they envisioned the property. It's the first time we've ever had somebody come forward and say they wanted residential. Every other use has been commercial, light industry, precision machining, things of that nature.
Thank you. So, um, yeah, the, this property's been out of business for, I don't know, fifteen, twenty years, whatever. If a developer wanted to come in there and put in some industrial use, uh, they certainly would have come to the town in the last twenty years. My concern is- My concern is the only folks that have come have been for developing it into 60-plus units. Again, I know that is different than what we are talking about here, but that's what's brought everybody here. The planned unit development gives more ability for developers to come in, and I'm pretty concerned about that. Quite frankly, we could make an amendment to the planned unit development map and just not include the International Paper area, and it could include the other ones.
Mark, thank you for your well-thought questions and discussion. Was there a response on that last item? Yes.
Deb Smith, I'm on the planning board. I just want to make it really clear, voting down the PUD will not stop housing. Sorry, I don't speak in public a lot. I'm nervous.
Hey, you're doing good.
Thank you. Having the PUD does give us layers of better control. We can control entry and exit points. We can control building aesthetics. There are ways we could control size. So all this talk of housing, vote the PUD however you vote the PUD. You will not stop housing by voting the PUD. That's just a fact. The PUD is not, everyone is tying it together, and I agree, Mark. It does, there are ways that the PUD could assist with housing, but it is not going to stop it. You could stop other legitimate development that people are interested in, turning the IP mill into something like microbusinesses. Or, we did have industrial, Cisson Engineering was looking at the IP mill. It didn't work for them because our timeline was so far out. A PUD would have been a beautiful thing to have in place for a company like that. So you're not going to stop housing with the PUD. In fact, you can make housing a little bit more easier if you don't do the PUD, because it shows the state, we're not willing to start tackling our housing problem. So, thank you.
Thanks. And I would politely disagree that we can't stop that, because the only place that developers are interested in are town-owned properties. I don't know how else to say that. And we have that control to not sell that building or give that away. And I am not against housing. I am, as I talked with you folks for a good hour about the financials of it, the financials and the increased students at this school would be massive. That's my concern. And giving any additional resources to developers, the only developers that have come here for anything, I don't think is a good idea.
I just want to thank you again for your comments. I just want to be really clear. When we talk about developers, I know that in reference to the IP mill, we're talking about, you know, developers. A developer can be someone who already owns a property. The mill building owners are developers. And so I want to be clear that when you say that no one else has expressed interest in developing other properties, the town is a developer. We just developed the new library. We developed the senior center. The mill building owners, they are developing their properties every time they improve them. So I don't think it's fair to say that the only properties that developers are interested in are town-owned. I just want to offer that clarification.
Thanks. I think, I think most folks here know what I mean when I'm talking about developers. But I do appreciate that, Mariah.
Okay, next in line over here is...
Mr. Moderator, I'd just like to make one point. Mr. Burnett had mentioned we don't have to sell it, and you're absolutely correct. We do not have to sell the property. We could own it forever. One of the mitigating factors for that is we've been notified by our insurance carrier and other insurance carriers that our insurance will run out in six months. We will not have the ability to get reinsured, so we will have that blighted property uninsured, which is a huge liability. Any mitigating factors of people, you know, breaking in, which we can check the records on that, fires, break-ins, you know, injuries, we would no longer be insured. So it would be self-pay for any damages that come out of that. That's a huge unfunded liability that I would not like the town to hold on to for decades while we figure out. I mean, we've already held it for 20 years, since 2002, when we took over ownership. I would not like to see the property sit for 20 more years while we figure out what we can and can't put in there. And I don't want to deviate too far from the PUD, which we're supposed to be talking about, but the request for proposals that was put out gives us the opportunity in public session to discuss what they were, accept or reject any, all, or in part, any proposals. So we still have that ability as a town, as a board, as a body, to say, we don't like any of the proposals, and we're going to take our chances that we can get something different in a timely manner, so we're not holding on to this property for 20 more years, just letting it sit and rot and become the next railroad salvage that, you know, somebody gets hurt in. So just to be clear, it doesn't have that, it's not the best option to just sit with it forever. Moving this property off of our ownership and into the ownership of somebody else who can redevelop it is the, what I would say is the best alternative to owning that for the next 20 years.
Let me just add, in case people didn't know, it's by normal commercial municipal insurance. Nobody wants to insure that piece of property, so we're currently insured with Lloyds of London. And Lloyds of London has told us, because nobody else will insure it, Lloyds of London has told us in six months, you're out, and we don't want to re-up your insurance. So the goal here is to get this property off the town roll into somebody else's possession before Lloyds of London kicks us off the insurance, which, it's a huge liability. So I just heard that this week myself, so that's, that's interesting. Yes.
I've lost most of my points at this point, but go ahead. No, go ahead, Mark, please.
You know, if she's okay with that, I'm okay with that.
Well, I mean, you know, if there's a response, we ought to have a response back. And I, Scott's right, and I appreciate everything they've done. They've worked on this for a few years. In their minds, the best option is to sell it, to get it off town rolls. There are other options. We are demolishing, or hope to, with that grant that we got to demolish buildings, and that is also an option. That's what happened when Irving Paper ran out on us and left that building for us to deal with at the Usher Plan. So just something to think about as well, and again, my apologies. And again, even though I'm up here speaking on this, I want to make it super clear, I think it's terrible what, I want to make sure Scott hears it, too. Scott, I do want to make sure you hear it as well. I think the letter that probably brought out most of these people is terrible. I have nothing to do with it. I hope, just because I'm vocal here, nobody thinks that, and these guys are up here giving a lot of their time and have, and heck, some of you have been on this for a long, long time as well. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate that, and appreciate your input and having the dialogue with us. As you noted, the conversation was great, and it was good to have input from our constituents in those meetings about some of the stuff before today. I just want to clarify and do agree, demo is an option. It's tens of millions of dollars to demo the entire site, in our last estimate, to get it to something that was open space or green and more insurable and less hazardous. The grant that we do have, we do have, I believe it's a $600,000 grant, is only if it's toward redevelopment. It is not just straight demo. It would allow some demo potentially, if it was strategic toward a development, so we need a goal and an endpoint and a plan before that really lines up and allows us to utilize it.
Okay, we're hearing a lot of good questions. We've been at this for quite some time. I'm not saying no, but step right up, and let's see if we can bring ourselves to a conclusion here in another 15, 20 minutes, if possible.
So first of all, Mark, it's not your fault that I lost my points, it's because I didn't write them down, and I'm getting older, so I can't remember them all. And it was more than three. So I have to be really transparent here. I'm still a newcomer. I've only lived here for 43 years. But, that being said, I also have been a commissioner on the Housing Authority for over 10 years. So I'm here, I'm here as a towns person first and foremost, but I do think our town, which I adore, needs a lot of education about affordable housing. And there's lots of fear in this room about what affordable housing in our town is going to bring. And I have to thank you, Jacob, for staying affordable and not low-income, because you don't have to be low-income to have affordable housing. And most of us in this town who own homes are really blessed with our taxes, and it makes it possible for us to live in this town, and most of us would probably want to live and die in this town. But I just, I really, I don't know how to dispel the fear. When I heard Jacob say, oh, the town, the state can come over and just, you know, change everything, it still is a working relationship. The sixth, the number 60 is not a given. Just because someone mentions 60, it doesn't mean that's what it has to be. You all can control the numbers, working, if it happens to be the Housing Authority. I just know they're one party that are interested in some things, but some things, I know they're not. And they've already made that clear to the town. And that was because of the cost. So I cannot speak to private developers. I can only speak to the Housing Authority that works under the offices of HUD and DHCD. You mentioned Sunderland, Jake, and are you referring to the senior housing there? Because the senior housing project that's in the...
The country's...
Okay, that's, that's a whole different piece, all right. The other piece I just want to address is, for the state, at the moment, and who knows? That could change. But DHCD at the moment is really interested in funding senior housing and building it, I mean, I'm sorry, family housing. And if you had a mix, we would probably have a better, and I, don't quote me on this, it's just, I'm guessing, you might have a better chance of getting some senior housing in, which I think people are really more in favor of than they are family, and you might be able to get a mix. But again, I don't want people leaving here thinking, oh, my God, we have to greet a 60 unit. You don't have to. And I understand the concern about the number of students in the school. I have my deceased husband in the back of my head all the time, talking about the budget, and, because he was chair and used to sit here and worry about it. And so I, and I, my kids went here, I get it. But I, we don't have affordable housing here, and the only way you're going to get more students without any affordable housing is us old people sell our homes and bring families in. When I moved on River Road, I was the youngest one on the street. Now I'm one of the older ones on the street, 42 years later. And it's okay. But I just, I don't know how to dispel the fear, other than lots of education, lots of conversation, ask me, ask any other people that you think might know, go to the meetings. It's not as fearful as it seems. And again, as a town, we do have some control. I can tell you right now, the Housing Authority will not come in and develop only four units because of the cost of developing those four units. You might get private developers to come in and do that, because they can throw away their money. And I know I had other points, but I don't know what they are. So anyway, thank you. But I just, I, education, we just all need to be educated, is really what it was.
So one of the new people in town is, no.
I am.
Forty-something years.
Okay, so in regards to the PUD, I just wanted to kind of reiterate what I think I'm hearing. And anytime we come up with zoning, it's always a fearful thing, right? We don't really like change, so it's like, makes us nervous. But I feel like you guys have put so much work into it, and that you're putting in place, what I hear is sort of an offensive and a defensive plan at once. And, I don't know, I just wanted to say thank you for your work, and you're doing the best you can, and that's what I'm hearing.
Thank you. And next up.
I just want to reiterate what you said about affordable housing. I think we should be proactive about affordable housing, not somebody comes in and does something we don't feel good about, but actually take it on as something we believe in. We want to help seniors and families and young people come into the town and maybe live in a more intergenerational way. When I hear senior housing, and I'm a senior, I think, I'd like to live with people of different ages and different diversity, you know, all kinds of people. So I think we need to have a proactive plan that says, the town wants this, and here are some ways to do it. And I know that's a very big and open idea, but I just want to propose that.
All right, thank you. Jackie, you're in line.
So I just wanted to clarify something that I think kind of got lost in our discussion, which was all great. So the request for proposal for the IP mill that's currently out, we're not sure what we're going to get. Mark had mentioned that only one developer or one business was interested in the IP mill, but that's not true. Over the years that we've owned the IP mill, we've had a brewer come in, a book person that was looking, like, to make books, we had Cisson Engineering. We've had a number of people call, and, and they didn't move forward over the years because the building was, one, in disrepair, or it was just too big for what they were looking for. So one of the things the PUD would do would help, you know, if they divided, we could divide it into lots of little things, but, like a microbusiness. But the RFP, okay, you can read it, it's available online, it was in the newspaper, we shared it on social media, whatever. It calls for proposals for development, and it's geared towards a commercial base. And when the bids come in, when the request for proposals come in, there's an opening, and then it's public to talk about it. So there's all your opportunity then to weigh in. It's not like they're going to, the selectmen are not going to make a decision in a vacuum. You all have an input once the proposals are, once they're, we receive them and we open them. It's a public process. And so we would have an opportunity if housing was part of that development, but currently, you know, it's kind of a, it would be difficult under our current zoning, but allowed under state, because we don't have affordable housing, right? So that's kind of a double-edged sword there. But it's not, don't vote down the PUD because you're afraid of affordable housing coming in. The PUD gives us the ability to control more, and when we get to that discussion, which we said previously, affordable housing is a different discussion, they're talking about it now, right? And come to the meetings or watch the meetings on YouTube. It's live, it's very interesting, riveting, have your popcorn ready. And then, or go to the meeting, have your input heard. You can send emails. Everybody, you know, I've worked for the town for a long time, and I have to say, this particular board is the most transparent I've ever seen. They make sure that we know more about what we probably don't want to know about, okay? I mean, the town, you know, that's kind of a thick book there. So anyways, I just encourage you to be part of the process over the IP mill, but it's not done yet. It just got released. It's going to be open, when is it, when do they need to receive it? By April? April what?
April 6.
April 6. So on April 6, request for proposals mean they have to send it in, it has to be a specific format, it's really all technical and all of that. They open them up in public, all right? They read off what it is, and then, in the end, it's going to get judged. When they were talking about the process, the process is, you have disadvantage, advantage, highly advantage, and you rank them. There's a, there's a ranking system. So if a developer puts forth a proposal we don't like, or it doesn't meet our criteria, which is geared towards commercial, then we, we don't rank them higher. And in the end, the select, if it's not a fit for Irving, the select board can say no. That's the thing, but your input is important. And I agree that we need to have a more educated discussion about affordable housing, because we have zero, and we had some. When RDI came in and built those six or seven houses 16 or 17 years ago, that met the definition of affordable housing. But those deed restrictions have now been expired, so they don't count anymore. So now we're back to square one. And so, yeah, I mean, I know I went on a little bit, and I didn't mean to. I just urge you to really think about what we're here voting for, and to have a more open mind about affordable housing, and to come more often to town meeting and to the select board meetings, and to the planning board. I mean, we have public hearings on zoning, and occasionally, we get one or two people. When I was on the planning board, I haven't been on the planning board for a while, but be part of the process in the beginning, and, and you can make the change then.
Thank you, Jackie. And, oh, by the way, about Jackie, she's graciously accepted an appointment to be our representative to the Franklin County Tech School. So we finally filled that role with somebody who's very energetic and engaged in business for the town. Thank you, Jackie. Yes, sir, Jeff, come on down.
A couple more questions that occurred to me. So this, this new zoning is going to allow, the planned unit development will allow more than one principal building per lot, which is generally not allowed. You can have lesser buildings, or auxiliary or accessory buildings. So if the housing units are... So, if the housing units are, are four right now, is it four? I was thinking it was three, but, okay, let's say it's four. So, if someone wanted to build, you know, more units, they'd have to build a second build, and this would allow them, they could build another building? It says you can have more than one principal building. More than one separate...
Yeah, we hear your question, we're trying to, freaking out the exact answer.
Eight point three point four.
I, I don't believe so. So, no, so, it's per lot, not per building, so four units per lot is currently the cap. We're also having a public hearing on that, March 17th. We welcome people to join that, if you have opinions on that. But, so, even though it would allow more than one main-use building, it would still be four units per lot, because it's zoned by a lot.
In the zones that it's available.
Right.
So, the use table for the existing zones is not changed by this. The overlay sits on top of it, so you can't have multiple structures to get around that.
And in this new zoning, this other step, is that going to include altering the zoning dimensions, the lot dimensions?
The use table with the, the dimensional requirements are the same as they already exist in your zoning today.
When you say other step, do you mean what we're talking about right now, or what we're talking about in the future?
For the fut, the, the stuff that the select board was talking about, other aspects. Because, I mean, how would you get multifamily use out of, say, you know, a part of the IP building? If, if you're limited...
That's what we're...
That's what we're saying.
That's what we're saying, that the PUD today is not about affordable housing, that's a completely separate decision.
Because it wouldn't, that would, that would, this would not be enough to do that.
Right. So, what we're saying is that it would require someone appealing to the state to, to override the zoning violation, which is what the 40B process is. So, right now, that would not be possible without that process.
And, I mean, I believe a lot of people that do that, do it with federal money or state money. Nobody, you got a building, it's going to cost ten million to tear down, nobody's going to jump on that list of getting free money from somewhere else and make money on top of that. So, why don't we do that? Why don't we just, you know, it's, like you say, it's just money. You get a grant, you hire developer, you hire engineers, you hire, you, you create the project that you actually want, rather than, I mean, right now, you're saying, we have no more insurance in six months. Why can't you, at that point, you'd take any offer you could get. You could come in here and say, hey, folks, we, we can't even insure it. And the other part of that is, isn't the town, doesn't they have a liability to how much you can be sued for as a town?
That won't address, you're talking about a mill complex along a river. The environmental concerns potentially, if something were to happen, the other liabilities, you're talking about the tort claim that limits us at a hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Some of these other things are, are above and beyond all of that.
Well, and what is the insurance bill? What's it been, a year? How much has the, the premium, yeah?
Brian, use the microphone, please.
Oh, sorry.
The premium's not more than a, a ten or so thousand dollars, but that's bare bones...
Right.
The premium's not the issue, it's the coverage if something was to go wrong there. We're getting bare bones coverage, and as was just shared before, the policy is, is underwritten by Lloyds of London. I mean, I got us six months to this point, I just had to renew it again this month to get us six more months, and they told me this was our last renewal, and I told them that we were in the process of trying to dispose of the property.
Well, again, have you considered getting grant money, federal money, to do a project and make it fit to what they would like to see, without, you know, being, you know, having to say, wow, we need to do fifty units to make it feasible? I mean, I, that would be my thought. Do it yourself.
So, I'll just comment on that, just briefly. The state does not allow any, they wouldn't allow Irving to create a new housing authority. So, we'd be working in partnership with other housing authorities, and that would be one of the proposals that already came in. So, what you're talking about is working with a housing authority to create that. The town wouldn't, doesn't have the capacity to create a housing authority to do that on their own, and I wouldn't want the town to be in the liability stages of owning and operating housing units as rentals. And the town should not be a landlord to direct tenants. It does not make sense, there's way too much liability you're asking the town to take on by doing so.
Okay, I see a hand way down back. Care to come up and grab a microphone? All right.
Please, please take a mic, because this is being recorded, and no one can hear you who's viewing later. You need a microphone, it won't, it won't pick up back there.
What's the question again? I'll restate it for you.
But with the comment that you just made, how is the town proposing to put in senior housing?
With the comment that we just made, how is the town proposing to put in senior housing? That's a, a great question, and something that is good to identify. You know, there's a lot of concern, and understandably, about what affordable housing can do to demands on services within the town, within town-owned properties, which, and I'm not calling on you, Mark, but I appreciate that you brought those up, they are important. The other piece is, generally, what I've heard from citizens is support for a senior housing project, and interest in doing that. This zoning overlays care drive, this planned use development, which would assist there in that project, which we, I believe, all want, that called out a minimum amount of affordable units for those seniors. And it even discussed an option for doing a 40B process with a developer, since a developer could only put four housing units in that property unless we went around the zoning. So, all of the things we're discussing here as concerns and negatives were considered positives in that proposal, and that's where, I believe, as, as some people have mentioned, and I appreciate, the eye to every proposal we may get for the IP mill on how is it best to fit Irving? Senior housing, we felt that all of these concerns were positives to fit Irving, and there are reasons why, in some cases, they may not be for the RFP mill, uh, the IP mill site with that RFP process. And we'll, we want that feedback, and we'll take all that into account as we're grading and deciding if we accept any of those proposals. That being said, the design of the RFP for senior housing was a, I believe, a long-term lease, where the developer would be leasing the property. And so, therefore, we would not be owning the renting and management and all of those things. The other process would be a deed restricted sale to allow them to own the property with restrictions that fit the model of what that RFP was for senior housing.
That answer your question? Yeah, it's, because it's really a deep question, the, the face of it is, no, the town doesn't want to be in the business of operating senior housing. Yet, we want senior housing. So, the way to get senior housing is to partner with a developer and have them develop it, possibly own it with the deed restriction, so the town has a take-back on the deed, but the developer owns the housing and the liability in it. That's for senior housing, and there was a second way you were talking about, but that's kind of the crux of it. Like, we don't want to be landlords to individual tenants. So, we would avoid that at all costs. All right. Further question? I think we've run the course of this, and we've done a pretty darn good job of it. So, thank you very much. You know, everybody's asked good questions and had good input, so, so thank, and thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to call for a voice vote. Failing clarity on that, I would go to a, a standing, we'll count the hands vote. So, all those in favor of Article 13 for a planned unit development, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no?
No.
Seems to me like the ayes have it. Would you like a counted vote?
We need to have a physical count.
Physical count, okay. We'll do that. All those in favor, and this is going to require a little cooperation in the room. If you're standing, you'll need to raise your hand while you're standing, if you're voting for something, to be counted. But what I'm going to ask everybody who's seated to do is, if you're in favor of Article 13, please stand and remain standing until we come back to the microphone and tell you it's okay to sit down, so that we got the count. Richard Newton and I have done a great job of getting a pretty, we've agreed ninety percent of the time on our count, so bravo to us.
We want, uh, we can actually have, uh, tellers, if you count?
Oh, we have two tellers who can count? And be sure, when you finish your count, bring it up here, and then say how you vote, so that we know what your votes are as well. All right, so, everybody in favor of Article 13, please stand and remain standing, and if you're standing, raise your hand. Those of you who are, were seated, you don't need to raise your hand, but the people who are standing. If you're in favor of Article 13, please stand. The people who are already standing, please raise your hand. Yep, so, okay. All right, everybody who's voting in the affirmative, you can relax, put your hand down, take a seat. All right, so, everybody who is not in favor of Article 13, please stand, and if you're already standing, please raise your hand and be counted, and remain standing until I say we're all set. you're standing, raise your hand. That way, we don't miss anybody. So, I'm going to be a yea. Sorry, I was standing the whole time. You've all been counted, you can relax and have a seat. Thank you very much. Thank you very much indeed. You know, town meeting process is the truest form of government, and I absolutely love the fact that we get together to have these discussions and see how we voted. So, we have thirty-seven yes votes and twenty no votes, and we're doing the math right now in a calculator to see if we achieve two-thirds yes or not.
Looks like you did it, we'll get the math right, but...
Double-check your math, man.
You're the mathematician.
No, I am not.
Thirty-seven plus twenty, so the total...
Yeah, pardon me, thirty-seven yes votes.
Thirty-seven yes, twenty no, so that's a total of fifty-seven. If that's going to be s, two-thirds votes, is that... Does that seem right, thirty-eight? Did I do that right? So, we take it and multiply the, um, you multiply the total number, right, by point six-six, because it's a two-thirds vote, correct? By, so it would require thirty-eight yes. We don't have that.
All right, does everybody agree with the process? It needs to achieve two-thirds. So, we took the thirty-seven yes votes, the twenty no votes, added them together, got fifty-seven, multiplied by point six-six.
Yeah.
And we would have required thirty-eight votes to make this a yes. We're one vote shy, so the measure on Article 13 is defeated. The noes have it. You double-checking your math?
I'm double-checking it, just a, a turn of a different way. Divided by three, turns out the same way, thirty-eight, yeah.
Okay, so, the measure has been defeated. We did have an excellent discussion about it, I appreciate it, you know, and I appreciate you. So, thank you. Yes?
Wouldn't there be a difference if we counted also the people who did not vote, the extension?
They didn't vote, they don't count, I can include them. Just because they're here, they're an extension, they voted either way. Would not change anything. Thank you.
It's, uh, it's the yays versus the nays and a percentage, not the total number of people who checked in to come into the room. All right, so, Article 14. It's the official zoning map, to see if the town will vote to amend the official zoning of Irving zoning map adopted on June 27, 2005, with the proposed zoning map dated November 2, 2021, on file at Town Hall, and presented at the November 18, 2021 Planning Board Public Hearing pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, or take any other action relative thereto. It's submitted by the Planning Board, and the Select Board recommends approval. Have a motion and a second, putting it in front of us? Do we have a proposed amendment?
Yes. Make a motion to amend Article...
I'd like a motion to amend Article 14 by removing any references to the planned use development overlay, and instead propose the remaining zoning amendments shown on
Let's, uh, let's find a place for that to live. To see if the town will vote to amend the official town-of-erbing zoning map adopted on June 27, 2005, with the proposed zoning map dated November 2, 2021, with the exception of the proposed planned unit development zones, comma space, on file at Town Hall, presented at November 18, 2021, Planning Public Board Hearing pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, or take any other action relative thereto. Does that satisfy the need of your proposed amendment? Yes. I think it's clean English for us to be able to follow that we have these maps, and we're going to ignore the planned unit development overlays. Questions? All right, we have a proposal to amend it, it's been seconded, I've restated, and we've had agreement from the proposal and the seconder, yes, that the restatement works for us. So, further discussion on the new zoning maps that you saw, and they're going to exclude the PUD zones. No questions appearing. All those in favor of Article 14 as amended, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no? Article 14 as amended has passed unanimously. Article 15? Oh, only kidding. Yeah, um, really, it's a pleasure to have you all come out for a special town meeting, and... Yeah, really, it's a pleasure to have you all come out for a special town meeting and take up some of your Saturday morning. Are there any big public announcements or something you'd like people to know about?
... I would like to encourage everybody, if everybody thinks it's wrong, if somebody's wrong, because today, there was a lot of talk, and people think that sometimes people are wrong, and people think that it's not easy. But they will, there are a lot of work involved, and you try to, that's part of town. And there's been a lot of activity, and then you hear, you know, there are problems, and what you may think is that, there are a lot of things that, and it's not just a matter of, yes, you have to, you have to, so, I encourage everybody, to come, all, this year, there's a lot of people, there's a lot of work, I suppose, there's a lot of, you know...
Yes, and encouraging people to participate in the process has always been a little bit of a frustration. Hey, I would accept a motion to adjourn this meeting or dissolve this meeting?
Motion to dissolve.
Motion to dissolve, second. All those in favor of dissolving this special town meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no? Oh, unanimous.